Good morning.
Yes, sir.
Uh, stroll that, uh, agenda up a little bit. Uh, I don't have the, the latest version, please, so I can look at it.
Well, did the agenda change from the one that was in the packet?
Uh, I think there's an upgraded one. Um, I just heard Kathleen.
Tell us what's on it, because I can't see it on my computer.
Okay, uh, Pam.
I'm emailing it out now, and I did email it, um, yesterday.
Oh, okay. It's, it's in yesterday's packet, okay.
I emailed it yesterday.
Oh, okay, okay, great. Uh, Dustin. Hey, Dustin.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh, Alderman Fraser, thank you. Uh, Dustin.
Yes, sir.
Okay, will you, uh, run down the latest version of the agenda for, uh, members of the board who didn't get a, a paper copy? Real quickly for us. Before I call the meeting to order.
Uh, so, um, on the agenda today, we, uh, after roll call, roll call, we have approval of minutes, uh, from May ninth. Special call.
You don't have to, yeah, don't worry about that part, just say the minutes. And under visitors, we have Kathleen Bond, and after Kathleen Bond, if my vision is correct, Robert Purnell?
Yes, sir.
And that's for census update?
Right.
Okay, now, what else after that?
Okay, so we have the department directors, Justin Dollar for Public Works. Uh, James, James Johnston, Community Development Report.
Okay.
Uh, then the regular city officials, city clerks, and attorneys report.
Uh, what's under the attorney?
We have the approved, uh, leases on the visitor center for NCPC.
Okay.
Approval of designating city auditorium as an annex of Adams County Courthouse.
Okay.
Say it again, annex?
Uh, and, yes, annex of the Adams County Courthouse for the purpose of conducting jury trials during the August twenty twenty Circuit Court term.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes, Mr. Fraser.
Well, the city attorney going to explain those with all this about.
Right, he's going to explain that, yeah. Okay, all right, uh, so, thank you Dustin for highlighting the agenda so that we can make those, uh, modifications. So, uh, let me remind everyone that please put your phones on mute, uh, that will help to cut back on, uh, background noise, uh, doing this particular process. And, uh, good morning, and good morning to everyone. Um, so at this time, I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Mayor Board of Alderman in the form of a virtual or teleconference meeting. Uh, today is July fourteenth, the year twenty twenty, and the time that is, uh, on us is eleven, eleven A.M. So the meeting has now been officially called to order. Uh, I ask at this time that we pause for a few moments of silent prayer, so let us pray. Thank you, and amen. Uh, so at this time, uh, if you would, uh, Alderman Mathis, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and somebody else finishes. I'm, I'm not, I'm still praying really. Give it to somebody else.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Alderman Mathis. At this time, uh, will the city clerk, uh?
Hello? Alderman Mathis?
Here.
Alderman Fraser?
Here.
Alderman Smith?
Here.
Alderman Irvin? Alderman David? Alderman Davis? Alderman Dillard?
Here.
Mayor, I'll present Alderman Irvin and Alderman Davis.
Uh, so we have a quorum that has been established, uh, by the board, uh, four members are present, uh, is the city attorney on the call?
I'm on the call.
Okay, thank you, uh, City Attorney Latham. All right, um, the next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Uh, we have the special call board meeting held Tuesday, May nineteenth, the year twenty twenty. What's the pleasure of the board as relate to the minutes of the special call board meeting?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, Ms. Mathis?
Move the minutes on Tuesday, May, you're talking about Tuesday, May twelfth, right?
Uh, May nineteenth.
Okay, Tuesday. I don't have May nineteenth, I have May twelfth. I have May twelfth, May twenty-sixth, and June ninth.
Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, is it a typographical error on the agenda?
The agenda is the nineteenth. It's the nineteenth.
Now?
It's the nineteenth, mayor.
Okay, the minutes of May nineteenth?
Mr. Mayor?
All right. Uh, yes, uh, Ms. Smith?
I don't have the, I have the twelfth as well, twelfth, twenty-sixth, and June ninth.
Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, what happened to the minutes of May nineteenth to the board?
I'm not sure, mayor.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, Mr. Fraser.
Alderman Fraser, I have.
Yes.
My agenda said a special call meeting be held two, held two, May nineteenth.
Right, did you get a copy? Did you get those minutes?
I have a copy, I have a copy of the, the agenda. Did you have, I have a copy. Hold on, let me spell.
Okay, Madam Clerk, are you sure that that's not a typographical error? Or should there be approval of minutes of the special call meeting of May twelfth and not May nineteenth?
May twelve was a regular meeting, mayor, so May nineteen was a special call.
Okay. All right, so why weren't the minutes of May nineteenth disseminated to the board? So that they could approve them today?
This is, uh, these are reapproval, mayor, these minutes was on the agenda for the June, the twenty-third meeting. And they actually resented, so one minute, one batch was approved and four, three wasn't.
So, Mr. Mayor, I think these could go out as one approval.
They got deferred.
Okay.
They deferred me in a minute, mayor.
Oh, these are deferred, um.
Deferred.
Uh, Alderman Mathis, if you remember at the last, uh, meeting, uh, the board agreed to defer the minutes until they were, uh, you know, upgraded?
Well, but then we would still need to see them, you know, before we, and, and, and know that the changes were made. I, I'm not, I'm just saying, I was getting ready to make a motion on the minutes that I was looking at, and, uh, I didn't see them, I'd have to go back through my box over here to sign those other two.
Yes, sir, they were sent out, you had ordered me to send them out after the twenty-third meeting, so they put it in a box like around the twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth, they didn't get them out this packet.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, Ms. Smith?
These were delivered, um, last week, at the end of last week, so we had, we had them all weekend, I'm, I'm ready, prepared to make a motion to approve all three sets of amended minutes.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's what I was getting ready to do, Mr. Mayor, but we, we had hung up on the, whatever the special call, because we don't have that one. I, I, you know, she can go on and make it, and I can, I'll amend it.
And, uh, I was just looking at the list of minutes that, that, uh, I received back, um, at the end of June, Sevilla, and, and it was May twenty-sixth, uh, June the ninth, and May the twelfth. Those ones that we'd corrected, I'm, I'm not, I'm confused about the May nineteenth also.
Yeah, the twelfth was approved, and then the other three was not approved at last meeting, they got deferred. So, May twelfth was approved, and the nineteenth, and the twenty, uh, twenty-sixth and June ninth was not, it was deferred. There was four items on the last agenda. The first one, they went to the whole motion and approved them, with editorial changes, and the last three had to be deferred. I can see you, I can send out you guys another copy, if you'd like, by email.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, Ms. Smith?
May we confirm, I think we all have May twenty-sixth and June ninth, and those were two of the sets that were amended that, and, that, um, Bob had to go over, that city attorney had to go over with the clerk, and I think those two for sure, then. The nineteenth, I guess, is what we're missing, but can we go ahead and, these are correct, can we go ahead and make a motion to approve the twenty-sixth and June ninth?
Okay, so at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the regular board meeting held Tuesday, May twenty-sixth, the year twenty twenty.
So moved.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, any unreadiness on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on the last page, under close determination, everybody was listed, but no votes are listed. And so I move, I, I amend that motion to add editorial changes on Ju, on Tuesday, May twenty-sixth. Everybody was listed on close determination, but no votes were listed.
Okay.
Did everybody see that?
There's a motion to amend, is there a second?
Second.
It's been, uh, second to amend the minutes of the regular board meeting of Tuesday, May twenty-sixth to add those editorial changes, uh, unreadiness on the amendment. Hearing none, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote on the amendment?
Aye.
Alderman Fraser, how do you vote on the amendment?
Aye.
Alderman Smith, how do you vote on the amendment?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote on the amendment?
Aye.
All right, the main motion has been amended, is there further unreadiness on the amended main motion? Hearing none, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
How do you vote, uh, Fraser?
Aye.
Alderman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, all right, it has been approved unanimously, uh, the minutes of May twenty-sixth, the year twenty twenty. The regular board meeting held Tuesday, Ma, June ninth, the year twenty twenty, what's the pleasure of the board as relate to those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, unreadiness on the motion. Hearing none, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Fraser, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
It's unanimous, uh, those minutes have been approved. Now, the special call board meeting held Tuesday, May nineteenth minutes, uh, of this year, uh, so we need to give copies disseminated, uh, to the board, uh, so that they can be approved at the next meeting. Any objections? Okay, hearing none, uh, it is so ordered. Uh, next on the agenda, we would like to welcome all visitors that are on the call. It is always an honor and a pleasure, uh, for the mayor and Board of Alderman to welcome visitors, uh, to our open, uh, public meeting. Uh, so, at this time, we recognize, uh, Mrs. Kathleen Bond, who is the superintendent of the Natchez National Historic Park. Good morning, Kathleen.
Uh, good morning, mayor and Board of Alderman, uh, I thank you for letting me come and share some information with you today. Uh, I want to thank, uh, Dustin, who's gonna facilitate putting some, uh, copies of my remarks up for us to see, but I've, I don't usually read through them, but I know that, um, Alderman Dillard is, uh, not on the phone, not able to see, and so I'll just walk through them. And also, uh, I come with, at long last, I think, good news, that we should have a real estate closing on the Natchez Visitor Center next week. And so the expected day of the donation will be June twenty-third. Um, unfortunately, in the world of COVID-nineteen, we cannot really have the ceremony that I was hoping we would have, because there is tremendous, uh, excitement within the National Park Service about the opportunities that are presented with this donation, and I hope there will also excitement in the community. Um, a lot of this, I know the city attorney will cover during his report, and I want to thank Bob Latham for all the hard work he's done with our Latham's office, both on the visitor center and the Forks of the Road donations, where he's just been lots and lots of something new from every turn. Um, he has been working to put new leases in place with the tenants at the Natchez Visitor Center. This time, Natchez Pilgrimage Tours has chosen not to stay in the building, um, but these new one yearly leases that are in place with the city tenants will transfer to the National Park Service with the donation of the building next week. Um, we are moving forward with our commercial services strategy, um, because of course, all the building will have to operate under federal law and policy, and this will make sure that all the businesses, the entrepreneurial enterprises that go on in that building will follow policy. Um, we are expecting to have.
Kathleen, wait one second.
Yes.
Uh, Alderman Mathis, would you please place your phone on mute? All right, proceed, uh, Kathleen, sorry about that.
Yes, sir. Um, so we were hoping we would have public meetings so that people could come and present their ideas about what would be the best businesses to operate in the visitor center. Uh, we will not be able to do that in person, so we will have, uh, two virtual workshops late in August. I believe they're scheduled on the thirty-first, but I'll get more information out. Two hours in the daytime and two hours in the evening, so that anyone with an idea or a suggestion or an opinion about what needs to happen in that building will be able to share that information with us. Um, and one of the things that we expect to happen, I can't predict, but we expect that we, moving forward, will want to have a single ticket counter in that building, so that visitors will clearly know where they can go in and buy a ticket, hopefully to any attraction in town, and we would be doing an RFP for that. And so anyone who would be interested, it might be, um, it might be the city or Natchez Pilgrimage Tours or some other entity would be able to participate in that process. Um, I had, uh, shared back out with the mayor and, and the attorney and with Anna Byrne, uh, an inventory of personal property that's owned by the city at the building, this is property that is not physically attached to the building, uh, just to see what we think might be helpful if it stayed in the building for continued operation and for the city to determine what they might or might not be willing to donate to the park service from that. Um, and if we're able to go, go to the real estate closing next week, then we are still have enough time in our fiscal year that we would be able to go ahead and move forward with working on the roof and working on the air conditioning system. And so then, I'm just thankful of everyone who worked to make this happen as quickly as possible, so that we can utilize this year's funds to do that. Um, do y'all have any questions about the Natchez Visitor Center before I get to the Forks of the Road update?
All right, are there any questions, uh, yes, Mr. Fraser?
Ms. Bond, I, I'd like to ask a question. Uh, are the public still going to be able to use that RV dump site and sell down it for RV parking?
Um, that hasn't had official determination, but that is not typically allowed in national parks.
Okay, but it's on, but if we turn over, it's gonna be, it's gonna be on National Park Service, we, we turn everything over, so it's on National Park Service, uh, ground.
Right. And so I, if I were gonna, we, we don't have a full determination, but my understanding is that that probably will not continue.
You, you're breaking up, man, I, I couldn't even.
Uh, I'm sorry, um, no, that kind of RV, um, parking and dumping is not typical at a national park unless we have, um, an, an entrepreneur who wants to come in and manage the RV parking part of it, and that could be a possibility.
I was, I was just trying to find, I, I was just trying to find out, because the public has, has been using it, and, and the people that has been, been in RV show, I mean, the, uh, the welcome show, they had been using for years, I just trying to find out.
Yeah, and, and it's.
Okay, are there any?
Cool, at a state. Well, I was just gonna say, the state welcome centers are all managed by the, by MDOT, and this one is not. So that's the difference between this welcome center and the other welcome centers.
Okay, are there any other questions for Kathleen that are germane to, uh, the, uh, visitor center? If not, uh, let's proceed to the Forks of the Road, Kathleen.
Okay, thank you, mayor. Uh, Forks of the Road is, uh, a, a shorter report, uh, it's, it's more pieces, more, more moving pieces. Um, I was hoping that we would be able to close on all these properties at one time, but you can't always get what you want, and it looks like we're still thirty to sixty days away from closing on the donations of the city properties at the Forks of the Road. Um, a couple of things, and, and, uh, Mr. Latham may elaborate on some of this in his report. Um, the old Washington Road that falls between the historic bridge and Concord Avenue, uh, we need to do some condemnation on that to get clear title. Uh, you can see the brick bridge that's marked on the right side of the map there. Uh, and then the title work and the environmental site assessments have been ordered, and, but that's gonna take thirty to sixty days. Um, the very exciting, not really news, but just to let you know what's going on out there, you know, the National Park Foundation is the nonprofit group that is the philanthropic partner for the entire national park system. Um, and they have been helping provide funding for us to do some of the pre-acquisition work, some of the surveys and appraisals on the lands at the Forks of the Road. Um, and as you can imagine, with all that's happened in our country in the last month to six weeks, um, there is a tremendous amount of intent, of interest, and, and support for the public sites that are talking about this whole arc from slavery through civil rights, and especially that are focusing on African-American history. There is a potential that, that this, this could really explode at Forks of the Road into some major funding donations that would allow, you know, the kind of, uh, development at that site beyond what I could ever have imagined. So, I do look forward to coming back to you in the future with reports on what may be going on in that area. So, um, that's my update on Forks of the Road, uh, do y'all have any questions about that?
Are there any questions for Kathleen that are germane to the Forks of the Road?
Yes, I have one.
All right, Mr. Fraser.
Ms., Ms., Ms. Bond, we are. Uh, uh, as you said earlier, you know, this, this, this Forks of the Road is, is gonna be very, gonna be very, uh, important to the city of Natchez, and we get this up, but, uh, we are gonna get this in this year twenty twenty, uh, you don't want any more delays, anything?
Well.
Well, I think the city donations will.
Well, I was just gonna say to Alderman Fraser that as far as the parcels that are owned by the city, they can actually, that can take place pretty expeditiously. But those that are owned by private owners, uh, you know, there's a process that, the process of condemnation may have to take place, so, you know, it really kind of depends on the, the, the private side, Alderman Fraser, am I correct, Ms. Bond?
Uh, yes, sir, um, you know, when you look at, uh, I know that Dustin had our legislative boundary up a couple of slides back, and when you look at that, there is a lot, it's an eighteen-acre district that's included, and so that includes at least two public housing developments that we do not anticipate owning. It includes a radio station, it includes a number of private businesses, and so as the mayor said, you know, we will go forward, um, negotiating with the private, um, landowners, and, and that process will take months or years, and so it, the first is about acquiring the land, and we can do some planning along with that. But, you know, uh, we're not gonna see anything jump up overnight, but it's very exciting to at least be owning land, that starts a lot of processes going.
Other questions?
Oh, just, oh, I was, I was, I was just, I was just, I just don't want this fall, uh, cracks, fall out through the cracks, as they used to do. Thank you.
Yeah, well, this project, uh, will not fall through the cracks. Um, it, it's gonna happen. Um, are there any other questions? Okay. Yes, uh, Attorney Latham?
I would just point out that there are multiple smaller tracks associated with Forks of the Road project. National Park Services has hired an attorney in town that's been doing the title work, and there, there are, actually are a couple of issues on some of the tracks that the city has titled to, one of which Kathleen, uh, made reference to, associated with that old Washington Road, it's gotta, it has to be cleared up, so there's just, just a lot of time involved with all these different little parcels to make sure that, uh, the title is, is cleared before the Park Service can acquire those tracks of land.
Other questions? Uh, thank you for highlighting that Attorney Latham, um, so that the board will fully understand, uh, that process of extricating, uh, those issues, uh, in terms of acquisition. Uh, any final words, Kathleen?
No, I just. I appreciate the city's willingness to work with the National Park Service, I think that the Forks of the Road is going to become an, um, spot in the city of Natchez, and I think that it will be very important for our future moving forward, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Kathleen, and thank you, uh, yes, Ms. Mathis?
Oh, on this proposed closing on the twenty-third, will it be a conference call like we're doing now?
Uh, uh, I, I don't know, uh, Kathleen, Bob?
You know, I don't know, uh.
Bob, I'm gonna let you address. I don't know that there's any action to be taken, it just, or if it just happens.
Well, the.
I've never done one of these.
Well, it could just happen, I mean, all the, uh, all the resolutions have been passed to authorize, you know, the transaction to take place, it's just getting all the documentation finalized, uh, before we can have the closing, and I suppose, uh, you know, I, I don't know who, I, I guess we could appear at the, uh, City Council Chamber if the board wanted to, uh, for the execution of the deed. Uh, but it would be, it'd just be up to the mayor and the board what they want to do on that, and it's, you know, we're still, we're still moving forward, we're trying to get all these documents finalized, I just received actually the MOU from the Mississippi Development Authority, who I've been waiting on for a couple of weeks to get back to me, and I forwarded that on to the Atlanta office, so that's another piece in place, but you just mentioned this, the personal property issue is something that, uh, but it's you sent yesterday, that spreadsheet of items down there, so there's gotta be a determination, uh, you know, what, what the, uh, city, I think there is some question, is what the city owns, what the NCPC owns, uh, and what is actually needed that, uh, for the visitor center, uh, in respect to the park services use, so that's, it's gotta be made, and then that'll be put together as another closing document, so it's, it's still some loose ends to, to, uh, to take care of before we can get to that point next Thursday, but that the board, the board didn't have to have a meeting to finalize it, it's just a matter of getting all the documents executed, signed and delivered, so. The man.
That's what I was asking, because anytime we closed before on a property, it didn't just close and nobody was, nobody was, well, we can't be present, but that even virtually, there's, there was no time that any, just nobody was present. It just closed and it just passed on by. Even when we closed on the uh, convention center transition and on the convention center hotel. So I'm just trying to find out if we're gonna have a ver, at least a virtual meeting to accept the closing, even if it's just a, I guess you would call it a, you know, a ceremonial meeting.
That would, that would be fine to set a meeting uh, based on the assumption that everything gets completed and, and uh, and is ready to close. And I'm, we're, we're certainly moving forward uh, to try to, to make sure we can get it done by the twenty-third.
And if, you know, you would notify us, Mr. Mayor, right, if, if, if we didn't, if we weren't ready, then obviously we wouldn't have it. But at some point, even the new administration would need to have some kind of a ceremonial meeting uh, for, for a complete closing. That's what I'm asking.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I have one last, I have one last found question. Maybe uh, Ms. Ms. Barnes, a, 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 a city attorney, can answer this question. It's, it, you know, I understand that the city is involved in this, but have the uh, um, Mr. Boxley, the gentleman who started this, who's instrumental, has he been involved in any of this stuff that's going on, this ceremonial stuff?
Well, this is uh, this is a visitor center. Uh, Boxley has been instrumental in the forks of the road.
I, I'm talking about, well, I was talking about Boxley Road.
Right, yeah. That, that comes later.
That's what I'm, in reference to the forks of the road. I thought we still were talking about the forks of the road.
Oh, no, no, no. Um, okay. All right.
Mr. Fraser, I, I'll let you by saying that I'm in uh, constant contact with Mr. Boxley. And he is, he is updated on, on every step of the process.
Thank, thank you, ma'am. I, I appreciate that with all. I'm just trying to find out, was he, was he involved? I, you know, I just wanted to make sure that he's in the mix of everything because he is very instrumental, instrumental in getting this project developed around. It was very important to our community. Thank you very much, ma'am.
All right, uh, next we welcome, uh, thank you, Kathleen. Uh, next we welcome Robert Purnell uh, to give us a census update. Uh, Mr. Purnell.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Um, and members on the diets and staff and everyone on the call. Uh, Mr. Mayor, there's a lot going on, as you know, with COVID- nineteen. We've been involved in uh, for the last two months on elections. And uh, we're also involved in the twenty-twenty census count. And as you know, the higher our numbers, the more the resources we're getting to the county and the city. Right now, as of January one, we're at fifty-seven point two percent uh, of our citizens of county. Uh, we can do better than that. And I know what we can. Um, last year, well, not last year, but in twenty-ten, the total count for Adams County was sixty-nine percent. And we certainly have to do better than that. The other thing that um, I'm concerned about, Mr. Mayor, is COVID- nineteen. When we transitioned from doing it online and they began to go door to door. I don't know what that's gonna look like. Uh, so I would urge uh, the council to uh, and, and the board members to uh, do a public service announcement. Maybe uh, we need to get the urgency of making sure all of our citizens are counted in Adams County. Um, so as you know, it, it, that brings in resources, job training, opportunities, you know, roads and bridges, healthcare, schools, infrastructure, a lot is tied to the census uh, and the census count. I am uh, concerned that we are only fifty-seven point two percent right now. But that's okay, because we have time to do something about it. Uh, my understanding is that we're gonna, the census will go on until October, October thirty-first. So there is some time. Uh, I will be giving a presentation to the county as well. We're all in this together. And, and I applaud Kathleen with what she's trying to do uh, with that corridor. Um, so the more resources, the higher the count, the more resources. And if we could work together, maybe do some public service announcements, have organizations, members contact your contact list, saying, let's get this done. If people have questions about it, on how to do it online, we can help them. But I wanna, I wanna be able to focus on the need for us to get our count up with the census. So that's why I um, wanted to get on the agenda today. I appreciate you allowing me to speak. And if anyone have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Purnell uh, as relates to the twenty-twenty census? Any questions? Okay, uh, Mr. Purnell, uh, we'll take you up on the charge of getting uh, some public service announcements out there. I'll do some before I leave office. Uh, and uh, I'm, you know, charging the board members to do the same uh, so that we can encourage people uh, and help to facilitate them in terms of being counted. As you said earlier during your presentation, uh, it is very important that we get the highest count that we can get for Adams County uh, because of the resources that trickle down from the federal government based on population. So thank you, Mr. Purnell, uh, for getting on the agenda today and to uh, encourage and educate the public on the twenty-twenty census.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and everyone be blessed and stay safe.
Thank you. Next, is there any unfinished business before the board?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Dillard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanna bring uh, an issue uh, to the board's attention. Uh, we, we discussed it before, but uh, I don't think there's been really any resolution to it. And that is the uh, vacancy at the Public Works Department. Um, a, my older woman friend Mathis had made a, 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 a great suggestion to see if the uh, youth uh, program could fill in the gaps that the Public Works were uh, experiencing. But uh, unfortunately, the, that hasn't panned out quite as well as we had hoped it to. Uh, talking with the Director of Public Works, only three of the ten have actually made it through to uh, to the employment and being in the, in, in the program for the Public Works. What I wanna point out to the board is that having discussed this with the uh, uh, department head is that currently, and there's really two issues rolled up in one. But currently, the Public Works Department is operating at less than fifty percent of its manpower resources, dealing with all of the issues that Public Works have to deal with. And it has put it in a precarious situation that one call out or, or one person being out for six uh, has, uh, can create a, a situation where the department is almost paralyzed and cannot respond to the task that it has for the city of Natchez. And uh, it, it, it is dominoed one from the other. And my early thinking of it was, well, it was just this grass cutting issues. It, it, it's actually more complicated than that. And I haven't reviewed the budget uh, for this year. The available resources, money that was budgeted for these positions that the Public Works Director is requesting are there and still available. Now, I'm the first one to say that the budget is a, an estimate, and we understand the circumstances that we're working under. But I think that we're gonna ask all departments to contribute some of their monies back to the general fund so that we can make uh, our ends meet at the end of the year. But we can't ask one department to operate at such deficiencies. It is just, it's physically impossible. We couldn't ask the police department to ask to operate at less than fifty percent of its manpower. We can't ask the fire department to ask at fifty percent. There are numbers where it's a, it becomes a, a, a critical number where there's no return. What I've done, the calculations with the Public Works Director, that to fill the position that he's asking for, for the next two months, would cost sixteen thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. And if we can accept that, the Public Works would be leaving uh, an amount of fifty thousand, two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars to go back to the general fund, in wages and salaries only. That doesn't include equipment that they need or purchases and other stuff. Now, here's where the problem gets complicated. And I think we understand this, but I don't think, unless you're in that position, you can fully understand it. So we may make two motions of this. My first motion is going to be to allow the Public Works Director to fill four positions that he has requested uh, for the remaining two years, uh, I mean, excuse me, two months. Now, this is where it all kinda cruxed around. Adams County, city of Natchez, state of Mississippi have all become dependent on inmate labor. It, it, they, they, they work in the, the state parks, they work in the city parks, they work in the, they do all sorts of things. As such, because of the pandemic, the Public Works Directors did not have access to that labor source. And any year, it may vary from ten, I mean, from eight to twelve, so we can figure an average of ten. That workforce has a dollar value to it. And not having that, he, he did not, and no one could anticipate the stamp pandemic, did not budget for those. So what I'm saying is, if, if the Public Works Director, we can get the positions first that are vacant in his department, that would bring him up to the minimum. And then, if, if it's all right with you, Mr. Mayor, we can talk about the um, seasonal workforce to deal with uh, the issues around the city. So I'm making a motion that the Public Works Director be allowed to advertise and hire the positions uh, of a laborer, a CDL driver, a street supervisor, and a tenant.
Second.
I'm sorry, sir. Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved in second and written as on the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Ms. Smith?
First of all, you know, our, but our subcommittee hasn't met on this. And also, if it was an emergency situation, haven't had an emergency presentation from the department head. So I don't know how, I mean, I, I think I know kinda how this all came about, but I would certainly wanna hear from him. And then, the fact that our, our, we haven't met on this. And then, the biggest thing of all is that when there's that money that's left on our budget, it's not in a vault somewhere waiting for us to come get it out to use it. I, we don't know if we have the money right now. So I, I am not ready to make a vote on this right now. This is our last meeting before a new administration. But I do wanna hear from you, I, Justin, I think you were about to speak. And I do wanna hear from you, because I don't want you to be in an emergency situation. But if we have any money left from the thirty thousand that Joyce wanted to go toward the employees that aren't working out, um, if only two or three of them work, and why can't we use the leftover for that only at this point to get you some extra help with, with the inmate labor does? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Smith. All right. Uh, Dustin, want to respond?
Yes, sir, Mayor, I was. And, and I guess to the first point Sarah had mentioned, as far as me, you know, me bringing this up. And um, if you recall, I brought this forth, that uh, now this will be the fourth Board of Alderman meeting that I have mentioned this um, this issue that we have faced. Um, and I think I've explained it in, in detail, um, in the three meetings that I have presented this. I've explained it in, in all three of those meetings about the issues with um, our full-time staff, the vacant positions that we do not have, uh, have not been able to be filled. And then in addition, I've mentioned our inmate um, labor, that we have not had that, and the issues that we are facing around that. Um, so on those, I can certainly go into detail if you need those. But I know I have, I have brought those forth at, at three prior meetings uh, to this particular meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes, uh, Ms. Smith?
I don't know if this does go under unreadiness, but I mean, is, what is, what's the emergency? The mowing right now, can you please explain what the emergency is for this, this meeting before the end of this whole administration? This is our last meeting. And to throw this without, you know, everyone that here is not easy.
Right. So one of the issues that we have right now currently is, um, we're down to, uh, we have eleven um, highway and street, you know, our, you know, employees that are actually working in the field. Um, and with that, um, two of those are inmate super, you know, inmate supervisors. Um, and then, so in addition to there, you're looking at, you know, on average, about ten people that we have here. And that's on a day where there's no vacations, no, no people sick, no issues. Um, in the last two weeks, there's been several days where we've had, you know, about seven to eight people that have worked the entire, you know, city of Natchez. That's from grass cutting to filling potholes to uh, repairing concrete sidewalks, asphalt streets, um, storm drainage, uh, any voids, any problems we've faced. Uh, we've got seven, eight people that are doing those. And this is a lot of area. And we, and we cover a lot of different uh, maintenance responsibilities um, to try to juggle and put amongst those few people. Um, so that, that's where the issue is coming in. You know, I don't, you know, um, I think before we put it out there and kinda shown how many employees and things we've got. But it's, it's to the point now where, you know, oh, many days, we, we're, you know, we're ten or less employees that we have here um, that are, that are working out in the field.
Okay. Uh, is there further unreadness? Mr. Dillard?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'm gonna take Mr. Dillard and then Mr. Fraser. Go ahead, Mr. Dillard.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I see the emergency as the available resources are so low that the Public Works would not be able to respond to any emergency. They are almost crippled. And to put them in that position, and should something happen between now and the, the October one, they would not be able to respond to any of the emergency. In fact, they're not gonna be able to respond to a lot of the things that we're getting complaints from the public. Your city properties are not gonna be maintained at a level that you're accustomed to or being satisfied with. And that's not to even mention the adjudicated properties, abandoned properties, or any of all the extra things that Public Works does. So the, once again, the emergency is, is that they're at a critical level where they are, are almost unable to respond to any emergency should it happen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh, Mr. Fraser?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, let me say this. I was, I was just like, he's been before the board numerous of times already requesting for help. What I, what I suggest to, to, to the rest of them, get in your vehicle and ride around and look at your ward. My ward is, is in terrible condition, paper everywhere, and the, all grass needs cutting. But just let me say this. The other day, I uh, I, I went back to, to the uh, city barn back there to talk to Mr. Dollar. It is, it is, I found out it was, they had four riding lawnmowers just sitting there. These people at the city barn is, and Mr. Dollar is in dire need of more employees. Now, we can sit here and not vote on this, but the city is going down the drain if we don't get more employees. Uh, and it's imperative that we go on and take care of this today, because like you said, he's been crying and crying, and I couldn't blame him. And, because it's, it's falling back on him. There's nothing to get done. And it's falling back on us, and we don't try to get him no help. So he needs some help. And I think we need to go and vote. He needs these people. After seeing what I, uh, seen the other day, it's, it is, it's, it's just a terrible working condition back there. And, and he's, from what I can gather, he got some employees that almost are ready to leave or almost ready to retire. If they leave, we gonna be in bad shape. So I think we need to just, as Alderman just said, we need to go and vote on this today. I'm in favor of, of, me myself, I'm in favor of my own some people. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, uh, further readiness?
Mr. Mayor, one thing, can I please get the motion repeated exactly what he's asking for from the budget and the board today?
Okay, um, Madam Clark, will you restate the motion?
May I just have the motion to add four Public Works employees for the next two months? Can I have a dollar amount or anything?
Is, is, is that the intent of your motion, Mr. Dillard?
That is being kept. Now, I have some rough dollar amounts. Now, I have some rough dollar amounts that were provided by the uh, department, the public works department head, and that that would be sixteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars plus, of course, the benefits. That's the salary packages, which I think uh, it, to, to get four people at that price even for those two months and then include your benefits, i- i- is something that I think that we can, we can ask of because the public works department will be putting money back onto the general fund and on the table. But yes, that's the number, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh, further unreadiness, yes?
I, I just want to hear from Sevilla on this. I mean, and why four, can we start with two? I mean, can we compromise and start with two on this? Let's just go ahead and get two hired, we're about to have to look at this again, we're about to have a new administration. Why can't we just start with two?
Is there further unreadiness?
Miss Mayor.
Let, let me say.
Uh, Ms. Mathis, Ms. Mathis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you are over day-to-day operations, I'm sure you know what's going on. What is your recommendation?
My recommendation is to go ahead on and do what Mr. Diller said. I, I had a meeting with Mr. Dollar on last week. Uh, he is in uh, he's in major need of help. Uh, the city is uh, from an infrastructure in terms of grass cutting and other works, uh, we are in the worst shape that we've been in a long time. And uh, my recommendation is to approve Mr. Diller's motion.
Thank you.
So, uh, just.
All for the question.
All right, um, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Nay.
And Alderman Diller?
Aye.
It passes by majority vote, uh, three in favor, one against. All right, is there any other unfinished?
Mr. Mayor, I think you have to break a tie on a tab vote, I mean, for three, but.
Uh, city, city attorney? City attorney?
Okay, yeah, there's only four present, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, that was one.
I know, I'm not, I'm sorry, my brain's on gear, four present.
Okay, uh, Mr. Diller?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, I think um, uh, one, thank the board uh, for supporting this measure. And I, I, I think that uh, uh, we're still not out of the woods yet. But I think Alderman Smith has made a, a really good suggestion that the thirty thousand dollars that we were looking at to use in the summer youth program, which didn't pan out, that I would make a motion that those money be used for the hiring of seasonal uh, uh, employees for the public works department.
Second of all.
It's been moved in second, unreadiness on the motion.
Mr. Mayor, is this in addition to four employees?
Uh, yes, ma'am, that's uh.
Why, no, put the money toward the employees, are you kidding?
Um, is there any further unreadiness?
Let me, are, 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 do they have, still have some of those kids still working right?
There are, I think, uh, how many do you have, Mr. Dollar?
We have, we, we have three today. And that's what we, we've um, we've had three for the last two or three days and prior to that it was two.
Well, yeah, I have, yeah, you, let me ask you a question, though. You've got five people altogether, right?
No.
No, no, I've got, we've got three here working. Like saying, those three have been here for the last two or three days and then prior to that, we only had two. Um, so we've got three currently.
You got some go out on COVID, you got some.
That's, that's correct, yeah, we had, so we had six, six total. And since they started coming back, the first week after that, one came back. And then another one came back and it was this, there was those two for several days. And then we've had a third one come back, they came back Monday.
When do that program end?
And that program is gonna be set to end uh, August the seventh, eighth, tenth, somewhere right in there. I'd have to, I'd have to go get a calendar.
Okay, okay, well, you just, you just keep those to August the seventh and then.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, because they're all, they are summer youth and they have to go back to school. So they will, you know, they'll work to about the first week, week and a half of August.
Okay, thank, thank you, sir, thank you.
All right, is there any further unreadiness on the motion?
So what is left, Mr. Mayor, I don't understand what's even left in that. If he's got three hired, how much is not being spent? Is it fifteen thousand and are you trying to hire another employee, seasonal employees? Is that what the motion is?
I think the intent of Mr. Diller's motion is the residual uh, in terms of the money that's left in that program to hire the seasonals so that we can go ahead and get this grass cut around the city.
I would urge Mr. the, Alderman Diller to put that money toward our hiring. And there are people that can know, we have people that can know, we have three seasonal employees.
Ms. Smith, we, I mean, just the trustees that we've been using uh, over, you know, over the years, uh, with them being out due to this pandemic, it has had a major impact uh, on this city in respect to uh, areas not being cut. So I mean, uh, we're in bad shape in terms of uh, the city's infrastructure in terms of grass cutting and so forth. I mean, have you, I mean, I've, I've, I've driven around the city and it's, it's in bad shape.
I, I have too, and there are places that need cutting, but it's, and you're changing your tune from a week ago, so that's fine. But I just think the money should be put toward what we're hiring four people for. I know somebody out of that fork can mow.
All right, is there further unreadiness?
All for the question.
All right, Ms. Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Nay.
And Mr. Diller?
Aye.
Okay, it passed uh, three to one uh, by way of a majority vote. And um, after I, let me say this in, in, in final remarks as related to this. When I spoke to Mr. Dollar um, on last week about the situation, he explained how dire his situation is in his department uh, in respect to uh, the city uh, infrastructure along with the aesthetics of the city. Uh, so that's what I want to explain to you, Ms. Smith. Thank you. Uh, is there any other unfinished business? Moving on, any county?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, yes, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, uh, Ms. Mathis?
Oh, I, and I'm not pushing this, I'm just asking because it's my last meeting. You and I have not spoken, I think, back here, uh, about two meetings ago, we were supposed to get with Fay Minner because the one person that they have over there in recre, in recreation, and I'm not asking for anybody to hire anybody, is, is working. And we talked about, you said you were gonna get with her and the two of us would get together and look at that person's uh, salary. You remember that on the unfinished business?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Can we get that done as quickly as possible? Because you got one person doing three parts.
Right, that was something that we need to discuss.
Correction, one person doing six parts.
Well, whatever it was, I know, it, it, I'm, I was thinking Fay, you were gonna get with the mayor and try to come up with something because I think he's making right at minimum wage. And that was the only question, I just would, I'm bringing it up on the unfinished business. So can, can that get resolved, Mayor?
Uh, yeah, what, what is his current uh, rate, uh, Ms. Minner?
I wouldn't discuss that on public.
Um.
Well, can we move that to executive session then under uh, um, personnel?
Okay, uh, city attorney?
I'm sorry, I was, I was reading something else ahead.
Okay, uh, okay, I, I guess we'll determine, we'll do, do a determination on it. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, county business, any county business? If not, department directors' reports, uh, Mr. Dollar?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. Um, as you'll see on the agenda, we, there's an area, uh, well, first let me back up and say that um, you know, this, each city across the state of Mississippi is responsible for the grass cutting and, and landscaping and so forth um, along uh, MDOT highways and, and right-ofways um, that are within the city limits. And so with that, of course, we um, you know, we do have a contract in place and have, we've had a contract for many years in place to cut our um, city uh, you know, the highways along, you know, state highways. And, but there was one area and we've gotten complaints, so you know, over the years about it. Um, you know, thought we, you know, maybe had, had it worked out. And we're still getting um, several issues and several complaints. And where that's coming from is on Linda Lee Drive and the section of MLK from Linda Lee to the city limits. That section through there is, is not under contract and has never been under contract uh, to be cut. Um, kind of what has been done in the, in the past um, is that when MDOT would cut uh, MLK, the county portion, when they would come through cutting that, they cut, and again, they cut with a um, tractor and a fifteen-foot batwing bush hole. Um, so as you know, that's not much beautification with that. But they would um, they did agree that when they would cut um, come through there, that, that's two or three times a year, they would uh, make a pass through those areas and cut the grass. Of course, you know, with that, it's not kept up very nice, not very neat, um, and it's only done a very few times a year. And so I've gotten, you know, over time, I've gotten a number of complaints of wanting to know why the grass isn't cut and that sort of thing. And last year we got a lot and we dealt with it through, you know, we had inmates at the time. So we would try to do, you know, as much as we could as far as weed eating and, and keeping the grass down in those areas. Um, but it's, of course, can, has came back up now as far as, you know, why can't that be added to the um, grass contract that we have in place or why has that never been done? Um, so I'm bringing it before the board to see what um, how they would like to proceed with that.
Okay, members of the board?
Yes, Justin, how much is this gonna cost? That's from Miami Court all the way out to uh, the old country club road.
Yes, sir, well, it'll be on, it'll be the, it'll be Linda Lee from Devro to the um, so the portion of Linda Lee from Devro to MLK and then MLK from Linda Lee to the city limits, which is right there at Country Club as you stated. Um, I have not received a price on this, um, because I did not know the direction the board wanted to go in. So I didn't want to do something premature without um, you know, speaking to the board.
Let me, let me say, that, that highway five fifty-three, correct?
Yes, sir.
That state highway?
Five, five, five fif, five fifty-five.
Five fifty-five, yeah, that, that state highway.
Yes, sir.
And they're not, and they're not, they, they don't, so it levels up, it's done, is that what you're saying?
That's correct, and that's, and that's not just here in our city, that's in every city in, in, in Mississippi. Um, inside the city limits falls on the responsibility of the, of that particular city.
Okay, now, here's another question here. How much is it gonna cost the city for that, for the contract work to do it more to the contract that he got now?
Yes, sir, and I, I can certainly reach out and do that if that's what the, if that's the board's wishes, I can um, you know, get, I can get a price.
Yeah, I was just asking uh, uh, how much it gonna cost? So you don't have, you really don't have a cost yet.
So that's his, that's his question today, Mr. Frazier. Um, is it the prerogative of the board uh, for him to reach out to the contractor to do a discovery in terms of how much it's gonna cost?
That, okay, Mr. Mayor, I, I have a problem with this, like, if, just, just see how much it's gonna cost. Uh, Justin, if, if it was too much, we might put it up, put that report up, but get somebody else then, just check on it, please.
So is that a, is, is that a, a motion to direct him to allow him to get a cost?
Yeah, yeah, I like.
Is there a second? All right.
Yeah.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Your motion died for lack of a second.
I, I stayed out one day.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, fine, I have a problem with that.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Dollar, anything else?
Yeah, yes, sir, the only other thing is uh, um, seeking approval um, to allow the mayor to execute the required documents for NRCS for the EWP, um, the rain event of, of January. And that um, EWP that's included in that, the site location would be the Natchez Bluffs.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'm on.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman Mathis, second by Alderman Diller, unreadiness on the motion. Hearing none, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
Alderman Smith? Alderman Smith? Alderman Smith? Alderman Smith? Uh, we might be in a dilemma here, we might not have a quorum. Um, Alderman Smith? Uh, Dustin, is she still on the call?
No, I don't, I don't see her on the list, Mayor.
Maybe she hung up?
Maybe she, maybe, uh, in that case, the mayor might bring my motion back up if she may, went on the phone.
Well, no, I mean, the reality.
Mr. Mayor, the phones are acting up, I couldn't get back on either.
Uh, we currently don't have a quorum. We cannot take, we cannot take care of business without a quorum.
I'm checking with her now, Mayor.
Mayor Grinnell, if I may, this is Rico Gianni, city planner.
Uh, Rico, yes?
My wifi just went down at my house, so there may be some internet connectivity. I had to switch to uh, cell service.
Okay, uh, thank you for that information, uh, Rico.
It dropped me too, ma'am, it's just to you. It dropped me also, I'm gonna call back in, I'm at Pam's phone.
Okay.
I just got confirmation from Alderman Smith that hers did as well, Mayor, so um, just a minute, everybody catch up.
Okay. Alderman Diller, are you there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Frazier?
I'm concerned with anybody on the line when I brought my, my motion up.
Uh, I know Alderman, I know Alderman Mathis and Alderman Diller were probably on the call. Uh, when you brought up your motion, Alderman Smith could have been dropped at that time.
Okay.
Uh, let me just get confirmation on that. Were you on the call, Alderman Mathis?
Yes, I was.
Okay, what about you, Alderman Diller?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, so, Mr. Frazier, we, we had those uh, two Aldermen on the call.
Y'all was on the call for the grass cutting, the contract renewed for.
That's, that's what they, that's what they just said, yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
All right.
Okay, Alderman, Alderman Smith is, is uh, back on, one moment.
I'm back.
Are you back?
Sevilla Mayor, I just got back on.
Okay, what about Alderman Smith?
I'm on.
All right, perform a roll call for me real quickly, uh, city clerk.
Yes, sir, Alderman Mathis?
Here.
Alderman Frazier?
Here.
Alderman Smith?
Here.
Alderman Irvin? Alderman Davis? Alderman Diller?
Here.
Mr. Latham?
I'm here.
I'll present it, I'll, Irvin and Alderman Davis, man.
All right, we have a quorum, all right? So the motion on the floor, uh, Madam Clerk, were you on the call when the motion was offered?
Yes, but I didn't get all of it, it, I dropped.
And that was for the emergency watershed projects, uh, for me to execute the uh, documents? And that's for the bluff, the Natchez Bluff? The motion was offered by Alderman Mathis and it was seconded by Alderman Diller. So I called for the unreadiness, I didn't hear any, therefore I was calling for the vote. Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Diller, how do you vote?
Aye.
It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr. Dollar, what else do you have?
That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, all right, this time, Mr. James Johnston, Community Development.
Afternoon, Mayor and Board. Presented to you this past Friday with my report. This is a grammatical edit this morning before I send it to Dustin. And I'll go to the first item. Citywide Water Improvement Project. Staff is requesting a motion to approve payment for the following invoices from our consulting engineer and contractor. Greenbrier invoice number six, sixty-four thousand, one thirty-one, sixty-five cents. David GK invoice number five, double oh eight nine, nine thousand eight hundred. Total amount seventy-three thousand, nine thirty-one, and sixty-five cents, requesting motion.
All right, do I hear a motion?
Same age.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Dillard, unreadness on the motion. Hearing none, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Fraser?
Aye.
Alderman Smith? Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
It's unanimous, Madam Clerk, James?
Staff is requesting a motion to prepare and submit the necessary reimbursement documents to MDA for these requested funds and to authorize the clerk, when the reimbursement is received, to issue a check in the same amount, twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-one cents to Natchez Water Works, so the contractor may be paid.
All right, uh, do I hear a motion?
Same age.
Is there a second?
Check.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Fraser, any unreadness on the motion? Hearing none, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Fraser?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
It's unanimous, Madam Clerk.
Continue.
Yes, proceed, James, I'm sorry.
Natchez Aquatic Center Pool Upgrades. At a previous meeting of the Mayor and Board, staff was given permission to seek construction bids for the above reference, above reference project. Due to the uncertainty of sales tax revenues at this time, an executive decision was made by Mayor Grinnell on Monday, July sixth, to terminate the bid process. That is, staff will present this request to the Board at a later time, i.e. FY twenty-one. Staff is requesting a motion to affirm the mayor's executive decision.
You've heard the request, what's the pleasure?
I will.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second on the motion?
Mr. Mayor, I never, I couldn't, it, my, it went out, I couldn't hear the motion, please repeat.
Okay, uh.
Me?
Go ahead, James.
Um, due to the uncertainty of sales tax revenues at this time, an executive decision was made by Mayor Grinnell on Monday, July sixth, to terminate the bid process. Staff will, will present this request to the Board in FY twenty-one. Staff is requesting a motion to affirm the mayor's decision to terminate the bid process.
The motion was.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, unreadness on the motion.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Dillard?
Uh, and I believe I understand this to be that we're terminating bid process, but, uh, we want to make sure that the continuing development of this process also be halted. That, in other words, that it, it go no further until, uh, the, the next administration can take this up and make a decision on it. In other words, I don't want to accrue additional cost while we're trying to decide whether it's gonna go forward in twenty twenty-one.
No costs are being incurred in this time.
All right, is there any further unreadness on the motion? Hearing none, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Fraser?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, James?
Targeted Branson Assessment, U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. Staff is requesting a motion to allow the mayor to sign the presented access authorization agreement to allow the EPA, its officers, employees, contractors, and other authorized representatives to act, access to Titan Hire as it pertains to the city's targeted Branson Assessment application, as authorized by the Mayor and Board on June ninth, two thousand twenty. Requesting a motion.
Do I hear a motion?
I will.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Alderman Fraser, second by Alderman Mathis, any unreadness on the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Dillard?
Aye.
It's unanimous, Madam Clerk, James?
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any other department directors?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is Fay with the Recreation Department. Uh, I got my, I was dropped off the original call when we were discussing, uh, my guy that works with the Recreation Commission. He is making eight dollars an hour.
Okay, hold up, hold up, hold up. That was, uh, to be deferred until later.
Okay, all right, I was dropped off the call, sorry about that.
All right, thank you. All right, um, next, we've moved to city official reports, but prior to that, let me, give me a second to, uh, hang up, I need to reconnect. I'm having a reconnection, so I'm gonna have to call in. So if you'll just, uh, hang in there for about two minutes, allow me to reconnect, please. Okay, I'm back. Dustin, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sorry about that. So next, uh, item on the agenda is to proceed with, uh, city officials' reports. So at this time, uh, Alderman Mathis, what one?
I, I have, uh, one thing, Mr. Mayor. I would like to see, and I guess I'm gonna put it in form of a motion, that, uh, the, all of the department heads be trained by CDC standards in terms of the process, if they have an employee who tests positive for COVID nineteen and the cleanup process. Now, I think the training can be done by the emergency, the county emergency management. But I thought we had in place, Mr. Mayor, all of that information. But we had a situation this past week, um, that, and you and I talked about it, so I'm gonna go on with it, where we had a situation in Walgreens. I wanna know, has that situation been resolved? Because I never did get anything back. And I had a department head to say that they had had several people out, and other departments had had several people out, and they didn't know how to handle, um, handle it when not only was, was, was a business having a COVID nineteen problem, uh, and what were the rules in terms of shutting that business down if they didn't comply? And go on and shut down and clean up? But that they didn't know what to do with their own department? And that we had had two departments to have people test positive, uh, but they didn't know what to do. So can you give me an update, number one, on Walgreens on Devro in terms of whether the corporate ever shut it down? To have it sanitized properly by CDC standards and people tested? Because obviously, if you're going into a drugstore, in most instances, you're already going in there to get medicine for some reason. Or if you're driving through, you're picking up medicine for some reason. So can you give me an update on that? And can you explain to me, uh, the process that the city has gone through with the department? To make sure if somebody tests positive, as was brought up previously in the public works, or the police department? What do we do? I know we don't shut it, the police department down, but I think it's some way to do something there. Can you explain that, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, as far as Walgreens on Devro, um, the Emergency Management Director, Robert Bradford, uh, made contact with the corporate office and more specifically with their security department. He was informed, uh, by Walgreens corporate office that they were going to shut down the store, that they were going to sanitize the store. That's the last report that I received, and that came directly from the Emergency Management Operations Center Director, uh, Robert Bradford. Uh, as far as departments in the city, uh, anytime we have, uh, an employee that tests positive or is suspicious, uh, what we do is that we have, uh, testing done of all other department members and other employees in the city, uh, that were possibly exposed. And I've established a relationship with the after-hours clinic and Merritt Health to have, uh, city employees tested when that occurs. So that has happened, uh, several times, uh, for the police department and also for the, uh, another department, Public Works and so forth. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, I think I was talking specifically about, about the cleanup process. Now, do you want me to read this response that I got? Or do you know what I'm talking about? Because it was sent to you at the same time, it wasn't to me, I think.
Uh, what response? Oh, you're talking about the one from the police chief?
Yeah. Do I need to read that?
Okay.
Because I, I, I don't want to if I don't have to. I'm just asking, what is our situation in terms of cleaning up? Because it seems like there was some confusion in terms of, of, of what we do when things like this happen.
Well, I mean, if, uh, if the department director, uh, state that they, there's a need to have, uh, deep cleaning or sanitizing done, we have a company that has worked with the clerk's office that, uh, can come in and, uh, provide that particular service. And, uh, currently is going on in our, uh, Natchez Transit, uh, department. There, uh, Mrs. Bartley has made contact with a company that provides that service.
Well, I mean, does the chief know about that?
Uh, I'm not sure. But he's not brought it to my attention, he's not brought it to my attention that there was a need to have someone to come in and, and perform that particular service.
Okay, I, I'll, I'll come back to that. The other thing is, do we know for a fact that that company, that the one on Devro has been shut down and sanitized and cleaned? Do we know that, at my knowledge, that has not happened?
Uh, the last communication was the one that I shared with you from Emergency Management Director Robert Bradford.
I mean, did he, so he's not gotten back and said it has been shut? To my knowledge, it's been open and people have been going in there.
Okay, he's not contacted me about it, no, ma'am.
Okay, well, I will bring this other, uh, I'm, um, I can read it, but it, 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 I think we need to talk about this in terms of, of the process that every department has in terms of knowing what company needs to come, come in and what can be done? Because this is very scary around here in terms of our, of our, uh, employees. If, if something happens within our department and, and the fact that the department head needs to know exactly who to call in terms of this cleanup.
Okay. Ms. Mathis?
Yes?
It's Chief Armstrong. We've been doing our own cleaning, however, if there's another service available, yes, I would like to know that, that we can reach out to those persons. But yes, we, we do the best we can, uh, to clean the building, uh, but obviously, there is someone could do it much better, and that might be the case that's needed.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may, then I'll read, the reason I brought this up, well, I, I think all of us have been very concerned, and the mayor has been on point with mo, all of this stuff with COVID nineteen, all, really in terms ahead of the curve. But when I got this particular response, she even says, "The Chief Armstrong, who has the authority to shut them down and make sure proper cleaning has been done?" That was one question about, so I guess I need to read it in terms of Walgreens. Whose responsibility is it? I'm asking because I don't know the answer. I do know I, I had two employees test positive for COVID nineteen. One is back at work, the other one is currently out now. The Sheriff's Department has had a few tests positive. Both departments are open to the public. Are we required to close and have deep cleaning? I have the janitor to clean on a regular ba, on, on the regular using disinfectant spray and other cleaning supplies. Thanks, Chief Armstrong. And that is why I brought it up. Because to me, that's, that, that, that just sent up a whole signal, Mayor, with what your task force has been putting out there. And I, I guess it needs to go to the, all of this that was stated needs to go to the task force. And something that everybody, every department head needs to know what to do in terms of making sure that they have done what they need to do. And also, since it's the police department and, and we had a report of a company, we need to know what the process is to clean them. Because I understood that if they didn't close down, the license could be pulled and they could be ticketed. And I think in some other areas, that's what's been done, but I, we need some clarification on that. Because when it was, when Walgreens was, uh, they had a problem on Sixty-One South, it was closed down. I think immediately cleaned it, I mean, it couldn't be handled. We're trying to figure out why it wasn't done at Devro.
Uh, all I know is what I told you, that Mr. Bradford informed me that the corporate office said that they were going to shut it down and do a deep cleaning and reopen. That's, that's the last conversation I had, uh, with him on that.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out, for the safety of our people, can we find out? Because to my knowledge, it has not been shut down, not one minute. Or when do they plan on doing that deep cleaning and testing employees? And I, 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 does that not fly in the face of what we've been discussing, Mr. Mayor?
Um, does that not fly with what? What, what are you referring to? I don't, I don't get it, Ms. Mathis. I mean, we've had other stores. We've had other stores with, uh, employees to test positive. And, um, you know, they have their own guidelines and protocols in place. You know, there were, uh, over a month ago, uh, employees at Walmart that had tested positive. Uh, so, I mean, corporate offices, they have their own guidelines.
Right, they gave the guidelines, but I'm saying, they didn't have a timeline? They could just leave it out there for several weeks? That's what I'm asking. There was no timeline?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Ms. Smith?
I mean, most companies have their protocol in place. They would, as soon as the night, they would shut down and clean overnight. I mean, that's how you sterilize it overnight. And I know there are companies in town saying they sterilize something for thirty days, that is not, I don't know how they, that, Daryl, you can answer this better than I, but I don't know how that would be possible. As soon as something's touched again, it could be contaminated, but, um, I mean, you're making the assumption. But she's making the assumption Walgreens didn't do anything, and I don't think that's fair until we confirm anything. We're, you know, we don't, they've, they've been through this before, I'm assuming they have very good protocol in place, but we don't know that they didn't follow it.
Right, um, you know, and I'm trying not to get into the science of it. But, uh, I mean, you can't sterilize an environment like that anyway. All you can do is sanitize. There's a difference between sterilize and sanitize. Sanitize, meaning use something to reduce the population of a microorganism to a safe level. And, you know, uh, these companies, they have their own guidelines and protocols in place. For example, when I spoke to the management at Walmart several months ago, uh, what they do is that they do their sanitizing during the night. I'm not sure what Walgreens have in place. All I know is that Robert Bradford had informed me that he made contact with their corporate office, that they were going to shut down and they were going to sanitize the place. It's like in the police department. The police, uh, chief has, uh, custodial staff that sanitizes, uh, his department. But if he wants a company to come in and do additional sanitizing, I mean, it's not been brought to my attention. And we have a person that we've been using, uh, for example, at Christian Hope, uh, Church, when we use it as a voting precinct, Reverend Scott requested for the city to sanitize after it has been used. And we've been using a company that comes in and will sanitize that environment. I mean, uh, there's, so. I mean, uh, there's, so that's, that's all I know in that respect. I mean, if a department director made contact with me and said, "I want a company to come in and sanitize," you know, we handle it. Uh, when it was brought to my attention about, uh, some employees possibly testing positive, we've gone through the protocols where we have other employees tested. And we, you know, we've been performing self-quarantine throughout that entire process.
That, that's what, well, the question, I really didn't have a question until the chief came on, but that was the text that I got. And you got it too, and I read it, I was holding it. But I wanted to know, and I, nobody ever got back and said to us that this particular place, because we, people are calling, has been sanitized, has been shut down, it's sanitized, it's safe to get back. So that's all. It's just a simple, a simple situation. It, it, and it could have been handled in a simple manner. It could have been handled just as it was handled on 61 South. And everybody went on back and no problem. We've got, not gotten any answers. I've not gotten anything since I, I got in touch with you. And that was about a week ago. That's the question. But if you, if, you know, and then the other question was, "What do we do within departments?" That was from the chief. So now I think maybe hopefully everybody knows.
Okay, yes, what I was saying is that, uh, Alderman Mathis, you know, I made a, a, a personal call to you when you, uh, sent out the texts concerning Walgreens. And I'd informed you on what, um, uh, what Robert Bradford in the Emergency Management Operation had come up with once he made contact with the corporate office.
Exactly, I was just saying, there was never a, then we got several other texts, Mr. Mayor, and there was never a text that came back and said, "They, they are in place, they, they've done what they needed to do. It's safe for people to go back and, and go out there." That's, that's the whole piece that I was missing. And it was only, I'm, only for, I got called. So I don't know what to tell people. And I know there were some people out there telling people, "Don't go in there," because it was a problem. So I'm trying to, you know, I'm trying to be business friendly, but I just needed to know, okay, the corporate office has done what they said they were going to do. Everything is ready to go and we're ready to go back. So that's all I was asking. It's a simple question, which is simple, which requires a simple answer that I hadn't gotten. Therefore, I brought it to you, to the board. And I sent it out the same day. And unless somebody else has gotten a text that I didn't get, I never got clarification. But now it's out there, so hopefully everything, all of the procedures are in line now. For all the department heads, who have any questions about what to do, you've just stated it. And then we are, I guess we're still waiting. I did text Mr. Bradford, I'm waiting to hear from him. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Alderman Frazier?
Uh, I don't have a, a report or anything. I would just like to ask you a question about, uh, since we're on this, this COVID-19, uh, I'm, I'm having a problem with people calling me about face mask situations. And the situation that I'm, I'm dealing, that I have been dealing with, uh, that's particularly one story I call you, talk to you about it. And wearing masks and, uh, masks. I had people call me about, when they get in, they have to have a mask to get in. But once you get in, you are, uh, these people are, are taking their masks off. So I talked to the, uh, the store manager and she told me it was perfectly fine that they take their masks off as long as they were social distancing. But to me, it was highly impossible to go to distance when you're in belt shopping. So that's, that's another question that, that we're dealing with. This, this COVID, this COVID virus is, is something that is up on me. And she told me straight out that, uh, she was going by, and we were just talking about, well, she was going by what her corporate lawyer told her. Now, I don't know, maybe, maybe I did, the city attorney could have asked some of these questions about sanitizing and what we need to do about people wearing masks. Do you have anything, uh, Mr. Attorney? But, because they're going by what their, their corporate lawyers are telling them in order to operate these stores.
Okay, uh, city attorney?
They should have a copy of the city order on, uh, this pertaining to, uh, wearing face covering when you're in, into the store establishment.
She has, she has, she has a copy for her application where you're social distancing. So she said, "Social distancing." Once they got in and, and, and once they got in the stores, they just took their masks off because if it wasn't nobody within six feet, they say it was perfectly good. And she was good with that. And all employees, some of the employees were kind of like upset, but there was nothing they can do because of the way I think that, uh, uh, our, our, uh, resolution that we gave them stated. So, and then she said she was going by what her corporate office told her.
Hello?
Well, it's, 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 it's set forth in the, uh, the, the city's order that if, if you, you can go into a retail establishment, if there's nobody in there, that would, requires a mask for social, I mean, so you got social distancing, there's nobody in there, you don't have to continue to wear a mask as long as you're not within six feet of somebody. So it's, you know, that, that was the whole purpose. It's to, to maintain social distancing. It's not, you know, it's like walking down the street. If you're walking down the street by yourself, there's no need to have a mask on. If you're walking with a group of people, you should have masks on.
Yeah, but you're in belt shopping, you know, in, in the park. So, you know, there's people moving everywhere and stuff. That's, that's just another issue that we have to address and, and everybody's kind of faced that dilemma. Thank you, ma, thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. Mr. Mayor, I, I have one more thing, I have two more things I would like to say. First of all, I would like to. First of all, I would like to say, Ms. Mathis, I want to, uh, uh, thank you for your years of service that, that you have given to the city of Natchez. And, uh, your expertise, I want to be, uh, slowly missed with the city of Natchez. You have, you have gained so much and contributed so much to the city. And we really, really appreciate it. And I also would like to appreciate for the four years that I was sitting beside you, that the experience that I gained and the knowledge that I gained from, from, uh, just sitting beside you and listening to you. And from all the other events that we attended and trips and you were showing me different things and how to do different things. I really, really appreciate you. So thank you very much. Secondly, I would like to say to Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you for your leadership that you have shown in the city of Natchez. You have got, I know we had some turbulent times and, uh, sometimes we and you, what it is and everything. But that's all part of, of, of being a politician. So I would like to thank you and, and for your continuously, uh, and may that you be happy the rest of your life and what you're planning on doing. You and Ms. Mathis both, so I would like to thank both of you for being such, such a good, uh, leadership and, and citizens and for the people of Natchez. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I want to pretty much reiterate what, um, Mr. Frazier said, but thank you both for your service. Um, y'all been servants to the community for a very long time, whether it was with the city of Natchez or the county and the city. So thank you both very much. And I wish you all the absolute best in your retirement from government and hope that you all enjoy some peace. Because it's, I'm sure it is needed and well-deserved. Um, I also want to just remind people, and I know this won't be seen or, um, or heard for a while. But anyway, the people on the call, remind you all to vote, the importance of voting and remind your neighbors and friends as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Smith. All right.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Okay, uh, Mr. Dillard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and, uh, fellow board members have articulated my same sentiments and feelings on, on all accounts. And, uh, thank you for serving on the board with us and, uh, um, we will see you in the future. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dillard. All right, uh, moving on to city clerk. Madam Clerk?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I ask the board to approve the, uh, claim docket.
Okay, you've heard the request?
So moved.
Is there a second?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Frazier, second by Alderman Smith. I'm reading this on a motion. Hearing none, Alderman Mathis?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Next item?
Thank you, Mayor. I ask the board to approve the mini docket.
Okay, uh, you've heard the request? Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a motion?
It's removed.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, second by, second by Alderman Frazier. I'm reading this on a motion. Hearing none, Alderman Mathis?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, bid adieu to my report.
Okay. Uh, city attorney? Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Dillard?
I, I do have a couple of questions for the city clerk and, um, I'll be brief with it. Uh, I'd like to get an update on the corrections to the 2017 audit. Have those corrections been made and presented to the auditor?
They are, uh, the accountant is working with, uh, Mr. Carr Hammond. I can get you the last thing he sent to me.
Uh, yes, and thank you. And also to the city clerk, um, is the update to the reconciling of the bank statements to the general ledger? Uh, we haven't seen a report of that in a while and I would appreciate an update on that. Are the bank statements being reconciled to the general ledger on a monthly basis?
They are, but you know, they wasn't up to date. So we are closely with word when I got here. But they are working on those, yes, sir, with Springbrook.
How many months back do you feel like we are?
Well, when we started with this, when you got approved our training and we got online with Springbrook, she opened up the city, um, account and it was back to 2015. So she was doing September 30, 2019 back, and my staff started at October 1, 2019, coming forward. So I can give you an update where we are. But she's fixing everything from, uh, September 30 of 2019 backwards. But when she opened it, it was 2015 stuff still floating around. So it wasn't being reconciled.
I, I'm, I'm thinking about the current year that we're in, um.
Yeah, we're working on, I can get, yes, I can get a status, uh, update on where we are.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Dillard? All right, uh, city attorney?
Uh, yes, I've got a couple of items listed on the agenda. The first of which, uh, I'm going to put off if we need to have a discussion in the executive session pertaining to, uh, those leases. And so I'm going to withhold presenting that to the board. At this point in time, we'll wait till we go through an executive session. The second item I had was approving, designating the city auditorium as an annex of the Adams County Courthouse for the purpose of conducting jury trials during the August 2020 Circuit Court term. Judge Deborah Blackwell had sent a court order and it's my understanding she had discussions with the, the mayor with respect to the need to have, uh, an appropriate space that would allow for social distancing in a trial setting. Because when you have, uh, what we call the benignary, it's the people that are subpoenaed or summons to come in and serve jury duty, you have quite a few people that have to show up, uh, to be examined to see if they can qualify for serving on the jury. And then they pick a, a jury of 12 with, and sometimes one or two alternate. So you have to have plenty of room and it won't, uh, just the regular courthouse and Adams County Courthouse will not accommodate for those numbers of people. And, uh, I think Judge Blackwell discussed it with the mayor and they determined that the, the city auditorium would be adequate, uh, a space to be able to handle these trials, the lease that, I just got this yesterday afternoon and I apologize that we couldn't get your hard copies out to you before the meeting today. But, um, from, from reading the lease that was submitted, the dates that court will be held will be August the 4th through the 6th and August the 18th through the 19th. And so it's, it's necessary for the board first to, to move under this resolution to declare the city auditorium as an annex of the Adams Courthouse for the purpose of conducting the jury trials during the August 2020 Circuit Court term on the date set forth in the lease agreement that is attached. And then we'll need another motion to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the lease agreement on behalf of the city for the purpose of holding the jury trial.
All right, do I hear a motion? It's been moved by Alderman Mathis and second by, who was that?
Alderman Dillard.
Alderman Dillard. I'm reading this on a motion. Hearing none, uh, how do you vote, Alderman Mathis?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
It's unanimous. What else you need, Bob?
I've got, uh, I've actually got about three, four items in the executive session.
Okay. All right. So that's it for your report, except for the executive session items?
Yes.
Okay. All right, um, is there any new business? Hearing none, um, a motion for a closed determination.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second, uh, that we proceed into a closed determination. Uh, I'm reading this, hearing none, Alderman Mathis?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
Okay.
Uh, this is Bob Latham returning to, uh, announce that the board has made a determination that it has items to discuss in an executive session. Uh, a couple of items dealing with the potential sale of lease of property and two items involving litigation. And as soon as we, uh, finish discussing, we'll come back to the regular meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, all right, uh, Madam Clerk, uh, we've returned to open. Uh, will you perform the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Alderman Mathis?
Here.
Alderman Frazier?
Here.
Alderman Smith?
Here.
Alderman Irvin? Alderman Davis? Alderman Dillard?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Latham?
Here.
We have a call, ma'am, everybody except Alderman Irvin and Alderman Davis.
Okay, all right, thank you, uh, Madam Clerk. Uh, so we're back in open session. At this time, I'll turn it over to the city attorney.
Okay, we, um, we need a motion, uh, to authorize Chris Kelly with the Green Law Firm to file a suit to quiet title to certain tracts of land involved in the parks of the road transferred to the National Park Service. Uh, but wait, the Parks Service will be paying the fees and expenses associated with the quiet title that will be paid at the closing of this, of the transfer.
Do I hear a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second? It's been moved, moved by Alderman Dillard, second by Alderman Frazier. I'm reading this on a motion. Hearing none, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Mr. Mayor? Hey, Mr. Mayor, I'm so sorry. I've got to ask the city attorney one question. I just thought about this. It's not a direct relative's firm, but it's a stepbrother's firm. Does, do I need to recuse myself from this vote?
Uh, the city is not going to be paying any expenses on this. It's, it's just authorized him to file on behalf of the city, but this is going to be paid by the Parks Service. But it wouldn't be a conflict, anyway.
Okay, just checking, thank you.
Okay, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Abstain.
Uh, Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
Uh, Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Uh, Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
Okay, it, uh, there are three in favor, one abstention. Uh, it passed, uh, by majority. Okay, uh, Mr. Attorney?
Uh, the next thing is, we have, need a motion to authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute the leases on the visitor center, one between the city of Natchez and the NCPC, and the second lease is between the city of Natchez and the visitor services.
Okay, do I hear a motion? Is there a second? Is there a second? It's been moved by Alderman Dillard, second by Alderman Smith. Any unreadness on a motion? Hearing none. Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Abstain.
All right, Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye, aye.
Alderman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, there are three ayes and one abstention, it passed by majority. Uh, city attorney?
Uh, the last thing we need is a motion to engage for engineering services, uh, to surveying services to determine the exact location of certain piece of city property.
Okay, do I hear a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Dillard, second by Alderman Frazier. Any unreadness on a motion? Hearing none. Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Abstain.
Uh, Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, there are three ayes, one abstention, it passed by a majority. Uh, city attorney?
Uh, that's all, uh, that's all the acting items we have. Um, I would go ahead and remind the board to go ahead and take a look. If you'll look at this inventory of personal properties, if you have any comments, uh, if you can get back, send them maybe into Pam, and, and so we can sort through that before we have to close next week, if y'all have any, any ideas about, you know, where that property belongs. So, that's all I have.
Okay, uh, any other, uh, is there, that's it? All right, if, if that's it for today, uh, I will entertain a motion, uh, that we adjourn, and I'm requesting that we, uh, adjourn in memory of, uh, Jean Easterland, uh, who is the, uh, late wife of a colleague of mine, a former colleague on the county board, Lynn Wood Easterland, uh, who passed away on yesterday and was interred, uh, today in the city cemetery. Uh, so I would request that, uh, we adjourn in our memory, please.
So moved.
Uh, it's been moved by Alderman Dillard, second by, uh, Alderman Mathis. It's not debatable. Uh, how do you vote, Alderman Mathis?
Aye.
Uh, Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
Thank you and be safe. God bless you. Bye. Thank you, everyone.